Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, September 9th at 2021 at 7:00 PM. This is a remote meeting. In accordance with the provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the September 9th, 2021 Public Meeting of the Planning Board will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv backslash. For the record, tonight, in attendance for the Planning Board, I have President Peter Conroy, Barbara Mankowski, Michelle McEckren, and Jack Lynch. I also have Kathy Murray, our clerk, attending. And for the remainder of participants, I'd ask that when you are prepared to speak and called on, that you identify yourself for the record and the project that you're speaking towards. Tonight, the first item on the agenda is, I believe we have a continued site plan review for 310 Kenneth Welch Drive, presented by Zenith Consulting Engineers LLC.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Jamie Bisnet, Zenith Consulting Engineers. Mr. Chair, if I may share the screen?
Right ahead.
Thank you. At our last meeting, we were following up with a zoning board of appeals meeting shortly after. And I believe we received conditional approval pending any zoning board comments. We're back here. Zoning Board had a comment for us. It was very minor. We just wanted to go over all the changes, including the ones that the Planning Board asked us to make as well to the plan. I don't believe there's any major lifts here, but just for completeness, I'd like to go over it just in full transparency. Since, from the time that we met with the Planning Board in the beginning to when we got to zoning board of appeals, the construction company actually had striped the lines in the circle out front here. I know the original, one of the plans by John Pink referenced 20 parking spaces, but we counted 19 that were painted. So we updated the plan to show 19 existing parking spaces. The comment that zoning board of appeals had was that they wanted us to specifically state that it was for Nature's Remedy. So we added in for Nature's Remedy on the plan. The Planning Board asked us at the last Planning Board meeting to actually show the striping over on this side, even if it's not, even if it wasn't constructed, just to take it from the intent of the ASOR plan that's approved on record. And so we have added that with the notes that pretty much what we discussed at that Planning Board meeting was that this is just taken from the ASOR plan. We didn't survey it in, and it may not actually even be constructed, but it's for an entirely different use in that building, a different tenant. We also were asked to look at the fire access in the rear. I did speak with the fire chief. We did pick up basically the tree line in the back. And he asked for us to put on this note, which was, "Inspection is to be completed annually by the occupant of the facility, and vegetation is to be trimmed to ensure safety vehicular access. At a minimum, access is to be maintained in its existing state." And you can see his tire tracks in the back where he drove around, was able to get out. He told me that he was satisfied with this. The parking on this side on the east has changed a little bit. I wanted to go over that with everyone so that we're extremely clear on it. The number of spaces have not changed. The location of some of the allocated spaces has changed. And so that's what I just want to show for clarity. Our client was actually fortunate enough to be able to work out a deal with the existing building owner to actually obtain the spaces up closer to the entrance of their facility. So they are now in possession of these six spaces. They also, in what they did was they traded off these six spaces for these seven spaces back here. But we gained two spaces over in here because on the original ASOR plan, there was actually a couple of spaces that weren't striped in time. They're going to move the dumpsters over to where they're supposed to be in this location here and stripe these two spaces here. The seven spaces over here are now going to go to the building owners that were originally going to have these six spaces. And also, the eight spaces over here are still going to be us, and they still need to be striped. When I was out there last, the shed was still there. I believe some of the pallets had been removed, but still needed a little bit of cleanup, but it's been several weeks since I've been out there. But I do know when I was out there last, the striping in this area was done and construction progress was moving forward. So we're happy to see some of the accomplishments being done. The other thing that was asked was that we put on the plan regarding the spaces to be designated for Nature's Remedy. They're going to paint the lines, paint on the ground that the spaces are for Nature's Remedy. I believe at the Planning Board's request because they didn't want to have signs everywhere. So we added a note that states-
Sorry, Jamie. Sorry. Just for the record, this is Josh Lee Smith. The ZBA actually, in fact, wanted the signs to be erected.
Oh, I apologize. I stand corrected. So I guess if the zoning board wants signs to be erected, then I guess, is the Planning Board okay with that?
I'm fine with that. I think that it is a zoning board of appeals special permit. And I don't think the signage or parking lot painting would have one greater or more negative effect than the other. So stick with the ruling on the special permit.
All right. I'll modify Note 2 here then. My understanding, and I did not attend the zoning board meeting, so I apologize. But my understanding was the parking was going to be painted. But we'll change this note to include the sign, and I'll get a revised plan to the board tomorrow.
Very good.
And I think that concludes everything. Is that right, Josh?
I think that's right. Yeah, it's a pretty comprehensive overview, Jamie. Thank you.
Yeah, we had your list in our packet tonight. You've covered everything on it, I believe. Those were all our changes. So is there any other discussion or any questions from Planning Board members on this? This should be a pretty cut and dry, but Barbara, I see your hand. You're muted.
Jamie, hi.
Hi.
The note that you made with reference to the, which the fire chief asked you to do about the fire lane?
Yes.
I'm wondering if you're going to be updating the notes section anyway? Would you be able to incorporate that note in the box on the bottom? I just feel like nobody ever actually reads the notes on-
The actual plan?
Yeah.
I get it. Yeah, that's a very easy ask, Barbara. I have no problem with that.
All right. Thank you.
Michelle?
Does it say anywhere on the plans about no dispensary? And does it need to?
I can, Jamie can speak to the plan. I can say that the ZBA, as part of one of their conditions in the special permit, it clearly sets forth that there's no dispensing within this as part of the special permit. Jamie, does it say it on the plan? And frankly, whether it does or doesn't, I think it's the special permit that controls, in my mind.
Yeah, absolutely. It doesn't say that. I'm not sure that it would be appropriate to put, there's no dispensary in the site. Because it is a special permit. But I mean, if the board, if the board wants me to construct a note for that, I can. I'm just not sure I've ever done anything quite like that.
I think the special permit would supersede all that, and it is in there, so I think that that's fine. Unless you have a real problem with that, Michelle, I think that would be all right.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that it is recorded somewhere. Thank you.
Just want to check with everybody. Peter, do you have any comments?
I'm good. Everything's ready to go, it looks like.
All right, Jack, you good?
I'm fine.
Thank you. All right, if there's no question from any butters at this time, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the plans as presented by Nature's Remedy. What's that right? Nature's Remedy with the two modifications to the note box. One, including the fact that the signage will be adhered to. We'll have signage instead of just parking, marking on the parking lots. And secondarily, that the note relative to fire access be incorporated into that section. Under Plan Note.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. So motion carries. Jamie, you'll get a chance to get that amended plan to the clerk, and we'll get by to sign that as soon as we can. Very good. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next item on the agenda is 162 Bedford Street, Form C to set a hearing date. Kathy? Do we have, I don't remember. We saw a lot of stuff this week. Did we actually get a site plan from that one already, and was that circulated or not yet?
Sorry, computer issues there. Yeah, there was a plan. It's a subdivision plan, though. I did circulate it and just wanted to double-check that date when you wanted to actually have the hearing.
You have any posting requirements for that that would allow us not to make it at the next meeting?
Yeah, the earliest it could be is in October. The legal ad has to run for two weeks prior to the hearing.
Okay, so can we do it at our first meeting in October?
Yes.
All right, and that will be October 14th at 7:00 PM. Everybody good with that?
Yeah. Mark, I would ask how you would feel about perhaps using this opportunity to engage a planning consult, which we've talked about many times. This is one of our first subdivisions that's coming through. You know, we're kind of hoping we have a planner by now, and we don't. So I'm wondering if this might be a good opportunity to use that resource. And if so, we'd need to invite them to the October 14th meeting and get the plans over to them.
I guess I don't have a problem with that, but I think that requires pricing and, you know, it's basically we're looking for peer review, no?
Well, it's a different
Or are we looking to pay for consulting because we don't have a planner?
Yeah.
Because I think we need to then run that by the Board of Selectmen before we spend that money.
They allocated the money and the budget, but I agree with you that we should absolutely run it by them before we engage anybody. Can we email Ari and talk to him about that? I know he's aware of the issue.
Yes. So either way, are we still good with the October 14th public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right, I'm going to make a motion to hold a public hearing for the Form C at 162 Bedford Street on October 14th at 7:00 PM. That's a motion. Barbara seconded?
Oops, sorry.
All right, so motion and a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. So to Barbara's point of discussion that we either need to secure a consult or do something in order to be better prepared through the review of this Form C definitive subdivision plan. Kathy, do you want me to communicate with Ari and just include you on that? And we'll just see what we can do to get something in a budget to have that review done? Okay. I'll do that. Peter, you'll be included as vice chair. And I'll include the building commissioner as well, just so transparency is always good, but just to see if we can get out ahead of this one, like Barbara said, that's probably a really good idea. So next item on the agenda, item number four, is the housing production plan update. That was a Serpents item that we got a bunch of information in our packet. We don't have a Serpents representative or anybody here tonight on that, Barbara, or we're just going to make a decision on how we want to go back to them and do this plan or that plan?
Well, I think at this point, what we have to do is make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen who have to allocate the funds. So the question is, on the menu that we received, you know, there's different levels of expense. And the two categories that were not covered under sort of the the least expensive plan were these two samples that they provided to us. You know, talking about different types of reporting available, which is an additional cost. And memory serves me correctly, let me see if I can find the actual cost, actually probably in my last meeting minutes. They gave us an estimate of what the cost was going to be. So I guess one of my questions is, did everybody have a chance to look at those samples? And what did you think about them, or should we talk about that at all?
I did. I guess I was hoping somebody from Serpents would be here, but my question was going to be, if we requested them to do whatever choice of the housing production plan, they did provide those two samples from New Bedford and Brockton.
Yep.
Would what we have look exactly like that? And my question really goes to, those look like they're 10-plus year plans. Are we asking them? Or is that something that Brockton and New Bedford have had Serpents do something for 10 years? So it's just accumulated, and it looks much more impressive because they've done it for 10 years?
That's a great question. And I think we should probably make a list of those questions and get them over to Serpents, you know. What would ours, how would ours compare? We also have far less data, I mean, far less data than these municipalities of Attleboro, New Bedford, and Brockton, right? Samples have 10 years. Okay.
I'm saying 10-year as a, not an arbitrary figure, but rounding. I know that there were multiple. I'll try and pull it back. The Brockton single-family home thing goes from 1998 to 2019. And New Bedford goes from 2008 to 18. Again, Brockton goes back to 1998. So
I think it's a factor also of where they're gathering the data from. I mean, a lot of this stuff is coming from the Warren Report. And the Warren Report wasn't necessarily in full swing for all areas of the state all at the same time in the last 25 to 30 years.
Yeah, so I guess it would be a very, I don't want to use the term anticlimactic, but if it's just, we just get the single column, you know, the 2021 or 2020 column instead of the 10 years to get that. It'd be nice if we knew we were going to get at least five years of growth or comparison.
Okay, so I think we should definitely ask them about that. Years for comparison. There's some other things that I don't know if they can incorporate, and I certainly don't want to increase the cost. But as I review some of these standard reports, it would be really nice to have some additional data points, in particular, we talked about the percentage of sales price to affordable housing. You know, the affordable, you know, let's see, let me give you a median home sales prices. So if you look at, she gave them different samples from different companies. This is the one that has sort of those graphs on it like this.
Yeah.
And what we'd like to know is if they can put bands for income. So if there's a way for us to compare what's happening, because I think what we're seeing is actually a boiling point. We're seeing a divergence, and we probably need to be keeping a closer eye on that than we realize right now. So that was one of my questions for that. And also, I wanted to know if they would be able to provide us with data on the estimated percentage of equity based on both age and income bands. So how much equity do our homeowners have? I don't think we necessarily need the foreclosure information or the distressed property information.
But No, I don't think we need that at this point, anyway. Most of our 40-classification housing is relatively new. You know, it's not 50-plus-year-olds units, so it'd be one thing if we were, you know, in the future 20 years from now.
Well, I mean, I think it's really great. And during the financial crisis, I was always amazed that we allowed this to happen because we didn't ever understand in some communities, what percentage of their homes were being financed at 100%. There was no equity in these homes. So I think if we could get them to give us, you know, percentage of equity and, you know, pair that up with the income bands, it would probably give us some really good, good detail.
Yep. Would anybody else have any requests for what this potential housing production plan would include? Or I guess we're asking, if you had a point that you'd like to be included, we need to ask it now. If Barbara generated an email back to Taylor at Serpents, is it Taylor?
Yeah.
Perez? So if there are three price points and your concern isn't in that price point, we want to make sure that we understand that. So if anybody has any concerns or information that we'd like included, please speak up. Myself, it'd just be that at least five years. And I'm sure that there's got to be some information that they could track backwards of previous years of information, even if they didn't get all the demographic financial information, at least the housing numbers, and you can look back at the median home prices and things like that, which those have always driven the cost of the affordables.
Does everybody have a copy of the cost requirements, the different tiers, or should I send that out to you?
I think we did get it last, before the last meeting. Was it like 10,015 and 20 something?
It was a, I'm going to send it to Kathy. The lowest was 15, the mid was 21,750, and the high end was 26,625. Then out of this special reports, the home mortgage analysis is the big thing on, you know, I think that's the big differentiating point, and that's on the highest, the highest tier. Which initially I was saying, we just don't need that. Maybe we need tier one or tier two, but the home mortgage analysis is pretty, pretty good.
Yeah, I myself would be leaning towards tier one or tier two there, I guess. Want to see how far back that goes.
Do you think this is a good time to see maybe what Nate or ZBA, I mean, what other stakeholders would be interested in having input on this, Mark?
Yeah, I think you got circulated the stuff that we have at this point. So maybe if we got comment from him, if anybody else, Ari has been included in this. He's aware. So I think I saw some of his responses.
That's right.
And he is, he has been tasked with this year's housing production. Or he had some he has to provide some documentation as administrator. So he's involved.
Okay, I'll copy him when I send the email to Serpents, and I'll copy you as well, Mark.
Yes, thank you. And yeah, so include Nate. We'll see if he has comment, and hopefully we can get this resolved by our next meeting. And hopefully Serpents gets that information back to us for that.
Yeah, because I think this needs to go on to the, they need the dollar figure for the special time meeting, don't they? If we're going to get something done for next year?
Yeah.
We have to wait till next April. Okay.
Okay, so you'll generate that and we'll follow up. So just to be clear, Kathy will keep on our agenda for the September 23rd Planning Board meeting at 7:00 PM to continue the discussion on the housing production plan with the Serpents update. Thank you.
Oh, Mark?
I'm sorry.
Is she hoping to get it on the fall town meeting? I think the warrant closes on September 15th, I thought.
Well, then we've missed that vote, I think.
Well, are we just looking for a budget number?
Yep. Why don't I send an email and ask them, and I'll send the email in the morning, so that way we'll get an answer on the 10.
Well, I would also just include in that, Ari, the question that, you know, we're working on, we haven't got a price yet from Serpents on the housing production plan. Can we still get that included on the warrant, even though we don't have the number? We should be able to just get a price between now and then, and he will include approval of funding for the housing production plan on the warrant.
Okay. Did you, Mark, did you want us to invite Tyler from Serpents to our September 23rd meeting? There's no point in doing that if we get this approved sooner.
I mean, I guess it wouldn't hurt if they could attend if we had more questions from the answers that we get in the price, or if we had two prices for tier one, tier two, and we could just help to clarify what those are to maybe resolve any indecision by the board.
Great, I'll do that.
Thank you. Moving along, item number five on the agenda is correspondence from Harold Card. Recommendation whether to exercise the right of first refusal on, it's a 61A property at slot, I'm sorry, map 18 block 1 lot 2B Montgomery Street, Lakeville, Mass. There's an attached plan. This is something that we approved in A and R lot at one of our last meetings. I guess my question, and I'm not sure that, can we ask Mr. Card, Kathy? Will the Chapter 61 status remain on the rest of the parcel? And only the A and R lot will be removed? And my concern is if we allow this, will they remove it from all the land? And then there is no right of first refusal on the rest of the land?
I don't know exactly how to go about that, but I will do my best to find out tomorrow.
Okay. If you, do you have Mr. Card's email?
I do not.
Okay.
I just have this letter, but
Kathy, can you ask him, his letter was dated October 21st. Is that intended to be August 21st?
Yeah, it was. I think I had sent out an explanation to that. This was the wrong one. I did have the right one. I included the wrong one, though, but it was supposed to be August.
As long as you have one that says
Yeah, I do.
So that said, can we make a recommendation? Or are we prepared to make a recommendation if it's only the A and R lot? With the clarification that not all of the property With the clarification that not all of the property is going to be removed from sixty one A?
So this is just the A and R lot? This is not that cranberry bug behind it that they were talking about?
Well, we just want to make sure of that. We it's being presented to us that they're just removing the house lot from sixty one A. But I, again, if they're granted some sort of relief from the the Board of Selectmen to remove some land from there, it should be clear that it's just the A and R lot, not the remainder of the property. Because then that means the town's already waived their right on the rest of it without a, an offer.
I completely agree.
So I, again, I think action is required by the board to act on this tonight to make a recommendation. So if it is only the A and R lot, does anybody have an opinion on this to uh make a recommendation?
If it's only an A and R lot, I I I supported, you know, um
Being removed?
Yeah, and also was probably most likely passing on any uh first, first right to buy it. But that's, you know, to be determined, but I don't have a problem with just that one lot. I don't see why they wouldn't be able to um remove just that house lot and and, but I would want to see it all rewritten, you know?
Yeah, I I know that they can. It's often done that way, just to remove a lot. And then everything else goes back in sixty one, but we just want to make sure that it stays back in sixty one the remainder. Or when that subdivision that we've already been warned comes back around, that the the same process should happen.
Right.
Michelle, did you have any thoughts on the A and R lot?
I mean, I think about the issues that the residents expressed concern with all the water flowing down the road. And I know as planning board, we have to be concerned with safety. So, I mean, I'm torn. I'm torn between, yes, it's just an A and R lot, or um it could lead to, you know, more road flooding or 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 some sort of safety issue. I'm torn. I guess I'd like to hear what anyone else might have to say.
Barbara, you have any thoughts?
We had a um, we used to have a list. I don't can't put my hand on it at the moment, but we had a list of priority areas that conservation had identified. And even though this lot may not be individually listed, I wonder if the whole parcel is on any sort of priority list. Mark, do you know, because you're on Kongkong?
I don't know uh from memory if it is or isn't, but I could certainly ask Bob.
It'd be great if they could give us an updated priority list. I don't know what's involved with that, but even an old one would be great.
I'll ask, because I think uh Mike Schroeder and a lot of the people that are over on the Open Space Committee handled that, so I haven't seen one in a while at Kongkong, but I'm sure that if there was one that come back there, that it still exists. I'll ask and I'll find it.
Should we ask Kathy to email Open Space and take one thing off your list?
Yeah, if you can, Kathy. I I would say send it to both Chairman Bouchard and Open Space Committee, just to see if the either of them can provide a list of uh priority conservation land.
I had another question in reviewing this case, Mark. Um, you know, um, our GIS, I'm not really familiar with it. I'm not, I don't log into it and use it. I think there is the capability. In the past, when I've used GIS, it was really helpful because you can zoom in and see the zoning, different zoning layers. So in this case, I would have been able to pull up this individual lot by the description labeled on the plan and then be able to zoom in and see what's happening around it. Do we have that capability or access to that?
I believe uh at Town Hall they do. I'm not sure. I can log in unless you have, well, like, the building commissioner can like that, but I'm not sure if that's through the, is it viewpoint that the assessors office runs off, if it's through that?
It is something like that. Yes, okay.
How about you, Jack? Do you have any opinion on uh this house lot that we approved a couple of weeks ago? On if the selectmen should buy it or not?
No, I I really don't. The only opinion I have is I echo what Michelle said about the uh the water situation we spoke about at the last meeting. I think if they come back to us, you know, with the, you know, a, an assurance that they're going to be able to control that, then I wouldn't have a problem.
Yeah, I know, like, you know, I think there's two different components to that. I think most of the runoff would come from the proposed subdivision that, actually, I shouldn't say it's proposed, that the they they talked of proposing a subdivision, which would be to the left of this A and R lot. That fifty foot strip that's still there. And the A and R lot would probably not even hit site plan review for the the lack of disturbance of uh less than an acre. So it's it's hard to say that we can control that, uh other than the fact that if we bought it, nothing would happen to it. But I don't know that that's a wise decision by the town, just to go around buying up house lots to stop houses from getting built.
Other than that, I don't have a problem.
Mark, even if it were to come to us for, you know, s- site disturbance, we would just keep, you know, we would find what we needed to find for them to fix it, but it would still be a hu- house if they wanted it to be inevitably. So just saying to everybody, yeah, so.
Yeah, well, I don't, I think it would be risky or the reward would not be high to buy one house lot on the chance that we might be able to buy more contiguous land adjacent to it in the future. Where we don't know the cost of that, or if that's even in the cards, and I think that it would be like I say, at best, a risky move to buy one single house lot. That I don't think you consider that priority habitat or great open space uh that would be doing a great service for the town, say we got that. It would be different if that house lot and the subdivision came up, and there were fifty acres in the back that could be hiking trails and the cost involved pre roadway, pre utilities was reasonable enough that the town could say, yes, that's actually a goodbye.
Like Betty Snooker's.
Correct.
Okay.
That's one of, I think, one of the best moves that the town made. So with the discussion that we've had, I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the Board of Selectmen not to exercise their right of first refusal pass on that piece of property. So long as all of the land doesn't come out of sixty one A, only the A and R lot.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Nate.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. You got that, Kathy, to shoot a letter to them? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item number six. So, signed by law. Uh, we've talked about that a lot, and so I tried to take it upon myself, and then I got Michelle involved, and we tried to do some stuff. I had a conversation with the building commissioner today, which was a bit enlightening as far as I'll, I'll, I'll explain what we tried to do. And then I'll go into what it triggers. So um, myself and Michelle looked, she did most of the research and found a couple of towns that had uh bylaws with definitions for, I'm gonna read what we had, an electronic message display utilizing light emitting diodes or LEDs, plasma or any other technology that presents static or multiple static advertisements on a rotating or repeating basis. Prestanding or attached, which may or not be double sided, including programmable images, animation, or letters. That would be the definition of an electronic sign. And we mostly to my guidance, I'm acknowledging that there are, I think, twelve of those in town already. For the most part, they're not too obnoxious, and I was hoping to put some controls on them as well. Part of my discussion uh this afternoon was that if the planning board wanted to try and take on this, uh making those by special permit. Uh, so I'm gonna scroll down a little bit to the next change or addition that we put in the signed by law, which is six point six point two one. E. Electronic signs less than twelve square feet in size are allowable by special permit only granted by the planning board. Electronic signs, twelve square feet or more are prohibited. So that acknowledges that there is one at both of the two plazas on Route eighteen, uh the Southeast Fence Plaza and the next one down, Savis, uh Aldi's, uh Camerac Liquors, uh the police station, a Pontiac where High School, uh self-storage up off County Road, I think that's at least eight. There are a few more. So trying to minimize the size of what could be there, and through us uh granting it by special permit, we could condition those special permits so that they shut off after a certain hour, don't turn on until a certain hour. If they do and are allowed to exist, and a part of the goal was to not have a a giant TV screen. Saw one of those come before us, and I was hoping to try and eliminate something like that from happening. But acknowledging and trying to gain a control over the ones that we have and that twelve square feet, which would be two foot by six foot or three by four, which is not the full size of an allowable sign for any business. It's uh, what is that? It's roughly a quarter of what's allowed for size. So, any, anyway, that said, uh we also tried to uh define billboard as any sign larger than sixty square, sixty four square feet, which the sixty four square foot trigger is the largest sign allowable, which is a common directory sign, which would be multiple signs because of multiple businesses within one building. So anything bigger than that is billboard, and anything bigger than sixty four square feet considered a billboard is not pro- permitted. But but from going through the bylaw, it all of a sudden, it it kind of triggers other things, so there's a lot more work to do on it. Uh, I don't want to go into that too much in depth, but I guess I wanted thoughts on what we've done so far, just to to get some direction from the other members of the planning.
I gave a question.
Go ahead, Peter.
Um, do we want to, while you're, while we're getting fairly detailed here, without getting too crazy, do you want to, do we want to find out like uh what um the brightness level is? That really pushes it over the limit, because we've all seen signs that are uh like, just um, they they turn up the the brightness. I guess maybe to make up for, maybe they make up for size. I I don't know why, but some are turned up max and um and I mean, they they glare all around, but without having like a specific number, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't know how to um word that, you know?
Yeah, so, great point, Peter. That is something that was in my discussion with the building commissioner tonight. Uh, if we did allow those by special permit, we could govern the amount of lumens. And make it, the the lumens had to be under a certain level, so that that brightness wasn't uh ever achieved, where you're talking about it's that not blinding, but when it's raining out, the glare does happen off those that normally isn't on a a dry night, especially if they're turned way up.
Mark, I have a question about these reader boards. Did you see, I think there's one on eighteen, and maybe I'm wrong. But is that part, is that included under the billboards? But these boards, we, this is, this is a message.
So we're not talking about the billboards here, Jack. We're talking about those signs.
Okay.
We're electronic message boards.
Yeah, the message.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Okay, I want to make sure.
Okay.
Um, so, we, just opinion, I would love to see none of those kind of signs in town. And I would like us to maintain rural character and have things be, you know, more villagey, I guess, would be the, a description. I don't know how you say that. Um, I would love to have a bylaw that said that we don't have those kinds of things. I know we have twelve of them or so in town so far. But in the future, we could see, you know, quite a few more, quite a few more than we have right now, and it changed the aesthetic. Signage has a big impact on the aesthetic of a community. It's not just that individual property. It's the thing that contributes to sort of the wider view. If you think about Route, uh, when you drive through Rainham, right? I mean, that's signs gone nuts. They're all over the place. And then you drive through some place like Cohasset, and the signage is all very sort of fit in and sort of villagey, fits in with the historic nature of the people. I don't think we need to go crazy like Cohasset, but I certainly would want to make sure that we have stronger controls even outside of special permit for electronic signage. That's just my opinion.
Sorry, what is that? How, what is, stronger what?
Stronger controls. I'd like the bylaw to basically, if it were me, I would say bylaw should have no electronic signage. Going back to the desire to maintain rural character. I don't mind a little bit of light, uh but flashing messages are distracting the driver. It changes the character of the town. Just my two cents.
Yep, but I appreciate it. I just, my struggle with that is, there are already a dozen, and if if we just say no to all of it, I think there'll be a cattle call of people trying to get them in if we do try to ban them. And we'd still have no control over the ones that are there, but if we can create the, the hours of operation part of the bylaw, because I talked to at least one of the owners of those businesses with those signs, and they are easily programmable to go into a hibernation mode. Uh, they can dim easily. All those things are controllable, and we can do that within a bylaw. You you're not going to do it if you just say they're prohibited, and those are all just preexisting, nonconforming.
What would you think about having um the planner consul when she comes, if we can get them in, to talk about this with us as well? To gather some additional feedback?
I mean, I'm fine with that, but I think we'd go further, have a discussion or draft something and send it to council. I'd rather have a legal opinion than a planner opinion. Just to to see what's controllable, what's not controllable. Oh, you know, maybe somebody who's written a bylaw or has seen those in other towns and understands. Because I'll give you another example. Uh, building commissioner told me that uh the Domino's Pizza Place. If you go to our signed by law, six point six point four or five, signs less than two squ- square feet designating entry egress from parking areas, other directional traffic control and safety related signs. Normal highways, control signs, hazard signs. Those are all allowed. Though you can just put up the traffic sign. It's not part of our controls of the sign.
And it should
Domino's, Domino's is putting them up with a domino on every one of them, and they're lit.
That's what I'm talking about.
That's interpreted
Yeah.
in our bylaw
Yeah.
as fine, because they're putting an arrow on. So
That's horrible.
So from that, I say, and we unfortunately have to add language at the end of that, that says, such shines, such signs shall not have any logos or trademarks or other markings other than standard traffic signs. And you could also add lighting component, too, that they shouldn't be lit, because traffic signs typically aren't. And you could also add lighting component too, that they shouldn't be lit because traffic signs typically aren't illuminated.
Agreed.
So it's, it's one of those things that like I said, when I started this conversation about this, I come right out and said, there's more work to do. I think that we could sit for several hours and try to hammer out and we need sort of a good back and forth with maybe the building commissioner because he's the one that's got to enforce it. And then maybe when we get far enough along, it could go to council. Just with, and part of that is not just send what we've done, we have to send our intent. Yeah. Anyway, does anybody else have anything they'd like to add to this? I mean, I, I think, you know, me and Michelle are going to have to continue working on it. And I don't want to give up on it, but I don't think that we're going to be able to have this concluded to say, Ari, save us a spot on the warrant this fall. And we'll have a public hearing done. We won't, but we're going to continue to work on it. So, Michelle.
I was hoping to clarify. So if we do put this sort of language into the bylaw, we could then use it to control the existing signs as far as the time and how bright they are. That is.
Well, that would be our intent and that's again, it needs to go by council to see if that's possible. I think that yes, the sign is there already and we would possibly need to come up with part of the bylaw to to hopefully control. Again, it's, we don't need to be driving through town as you're coming home from a ski trip or something at one in the morning and see the flashing guy carrying the pizza on the side thing going on. That doesn't need to happen at one in the morning. You know, it serves no purpose. And I think if you did it by special permit, you could deny a sign if it's against the residential neighborhood. You know, because that's part of the controls of when we do site plan review on a commercial property against residential is there has to be a buffer. So you stop putting up those signs with those refresh rates, which there is a flash to that when it changes and it's, it's got to be disturbing to somebody with a window near there. Kenny Rogers Roasters. Anybody reference Seinfeld? Peter got it.
So under, I'm looking at the master plan mark and sign usage signs are listed under strategies two point two point two. And I don't see a ton more notes, just that maintain Lakeville semi-rural character by encouraging growth that matches its surroundings while supporting local business community. That's all it really says. So maintaining rural character is going to change by the day.
Yeah. So Michelle, we'll keep working on that.
Yeah.
Okay. And I know you hate him, Barbara. I know a lot of people hate him, but I, I think we need to kind of minimize them, gain control. And if it's through a special permit and there's a denial based on reasonable information, like against the residential neighborhood or therefore you'd have the right to do that, I think. So I know ultimately, I think we have the same outlook on Lakeville. I'm just trying to get there a different way. And I know you may not fully agree with it, but I, I think we have good intentions in what we're trying to do. Okay, we'll, we'll continue to work. We'll come back. I don't know if it'll be at the next meeting if we have progress, but we're going to keep going on that. Next item on the agenda was design standard discussion. So Jack had a discussion with master plan because they keep asking. And so I ended up talking to Rodney Dixon, who is on the Zone Board of Appeals, but he is the chairman of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. As they keep asking about when the planning board is going to do something about design standards. And you can't just create a zone to have design standards unless it's a historic district, but we're trying to control business owned properties. I'm going to cut to the chase. My opinion is, and I think the time is right, it would be well received because of big self-storage and I mean, I hate to keep saying dollar trees, that's got to be five or six years old, but those types of developments. I think we need to change the density bonus that we have. So currently we allow 50% lot coverage by right. Self-storage missed it by like 2%. And if we lowered to 25% and we grant relief back up to 70%, we could hit the architectural trigger at 25%. Maybe at 40%, you hit landscape trigger and maybe then to to have the the remaining 10 or 15% is that open space or something else that you try to achieve or so that that's a discussion that I wanted to have, but I think that that's the only way. We have something now, but it's missed. Like I say, on the self-storage, it missed, it just didn't hit the coverage. And it was by like 2%.
Mark, you pretty much read my mind because like that's the only way you'll have any kind of any kind of clout with any kind of design standards is if you can force the developer's hand, you know? You have, you have to have something that they want in order to spend all this additional money and make a building look good or else you'll just get, you know, what you get. So.
So that said, Barbara, I know we all have a lot going on, but I'd like to, if you would humor me, I'd like to try to task you with, if you actually look at that section of the bylaw for the density bonus, there are guidelines in there right now for how the facade of a building needs to change every so often. With in or there has to be metal and other types of materials to break up the appearance so that it's just not a giant monolithic screen of cement blocks or whatever. That I think is where you could implement some guidelines that would be more of the rural character rather than, to me, what we have right now under the density bonus design guidelines that are there could very easily be a like a very modern, cold futuristic building. It's just broken up by some changes in plane.
Yep.
And I think that if you could focus on something like that, we work on changing the bylaw to change that trigger down to a lower percentage, I think we'd catch more and get the architectural that you want at a, at a lower lot coverage percentage.
I mean, of it, I think it's, I think it's a really quick fix, but I don't think it answers the question about what type of you know, aesthetic we want in our community. A lot of people don't realize that in the city of Boston in the nineties, they, they imposed a design standard that brick and granite within a certain color scheme. And that development that went on for 20 to 30 years is part of the reason that we through the city of Boston, it is very, very beautiful. They've changed some of those guidelines now, which is why you're seeing some more metal and a lot more glass going on. A lot of that has to do with energy efficiency and trying to use that stuff, but I just think, you know, I love, I love the idea of being right away, Mark, but I do think in the bylaw, it would be nice to have some design standards that are a little bit more narrow. I mean, zinc.
What I'm asking you to do is just make it something so that it's rural Cape Cod style with Nantucket this. That's what needs to be put in there rather than what's there. And so if you could, you could go and plagiarize Duxbury's if they have something like that. That's what we want to plug into. What's, to me, like I said, could be a very modern looking building that's not rural based on the design standards that are in the density bonus relief. So I think you could plug it right in. If you can try to plagiarize something out of another town that has that rural Nantucket style and we'll put that in there instead.
All right. I like it, Mark. Thank you.
Okay. That said, there was one other thing that I want to work on and I, I love everybody's help and input on this stuff. And I really want to get it done this year. So by spring town meeting, we're making a lot of these changes. If we can't get anything done on the current fall town meeting, but one little quick, I think it's a quick little line out and change is on site plan review. We want that to be concluded with site plan approval. Want the actual term site plan approval and a laid out guideline of what the approval consists of with so many signed copies so that right now it's just site plan review is the term and there's no conclusion to it within the bylaw. And it would be nice to eliminate that. You know, the wise guy engineer that says, oh, well, you, you have a review, but there's no approval. So here it is, go over it, but it's kind of no teeth type of thing. I'd like to have the teeth in it.
Mark, in addition to that.
Go ahead, yeah.
Um, like say, we're gonna, we're gonna look at a form C in a month from now roughly. And I don't know, I didn't look at the plans, whether it was going to be a private way or public way. But let's say it's going to be a road that's going to be, that they're going to want to be eventually accepted. We had a little ambiguity with the last one that we, that was destined to be a town way as far as timing wise. And if there's a way that we could have a very short little checklist, be like, you know, top coat, all the, all the, you know, and, and all the stages that get them to where they want to be. I think it's fair for the developer and fair for the town because basically we, we instituted the way it always been and it's, that's not really fair. You know what I mean?
Yep. So we've changed, or I shouldn't say we've changed. What's come in front of us over the past year or so has been different where it's been private ways.
Correct.
And they haven't sought the approval of town road. And Barbara always talks about the number of waivers that we give. And I again talked to the building commissioner, he brought up a good point that, so if it's going to be a private way that's not accepted, we should have a standard for that. And then, so the public way should be a different standard, but everybody that comes in to put the private way should be playing by the same rule. That it's understood that they don't have to put maybe Cape Cod burn and streetlights, whatever. That just shouldn't be part of the standard for private way. But if maybe they shouldn't be gravelled, so they all should have some pavement or should they all be gravelled? You know, I think that's, that's a lot of just indecision left up to a developer. We don't put a standard on what we expect a private way to be. But anyway, the subdivision control stuff, that's quite a bit different than the site plan stuff as far as that. We do have a little bit more of a grasp and control over the subdivision stuff. Would you agree with that, Peter?
I would. Yeah. It's almost like, it's, it's almost like when, whenever you see something that like a list of criteria and it would start with the, the private way and then you would say public way, everything that the private way has to do. And then, you know, and you add to it.
Yeah.
Is the, is like the easiest way for a developer to take it and go with it, you know? I'm mixed on private ways. I won't get into it with everybody, but I, you know, that we've seen like the full gambit, the, the on this board in the past eight years. So you get the whole enchilada. So.
Yeah. And, and you know, just with what you're saying there, Peter, first thing that comes to mind is if you have these minimum standards for a private way, you're going to at some point see some guy come in and say, I want to put in a 50 lot private way.
Yeah, it's only a matter of time.
So maybe that's a criteria is not more than three lots or five lots on a private way. You know, is that?
There is 50 lot private ways in this town. They're just, they're, they're really old.
Yeah. So I see that Rodney Dixon actually was able to join us. I actually want, so I want to back up the conversation a little bit. Rodney, thanks for joining us. We actually just talked about the design standard component that you and I discussed. You with us, Rodney?
I am. Can you hear me?
I can now. Yep.
All right. Sorry about that. I, my audio is not so good. Yes, I caught, I caught part of the conversation about the design standards. Thank you.
Great. And you and I discussed that a little bit more in depth last week. Barbara is going to be one of the driving components on the board here. And Rodney, you actually, I think you gave me the term like Nantucket or Cape Cod style.
That's correct.
And what, what we're looking to do, and maybe you could work with Barbara to come up with the actual language if we're going to change the density bonus design standards to more reflect rural development rather than it's, it's very unclear what, there's no style to what is implemented right now, the density bonuses. So we'd like language put in there. If you guys could work on that to give us that again, your term Nantucket or Cape Cod style. And, and one of the easiest ways that we've been able to do some of that bylaw stuff is look at other towns that have those type of bylaws to take some language right out of theirs and just plug and play into ours to replace some of the stuff we don't like.
Right. Mr. Chairman, if I'm, if I may, we, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, if memory serves, looked at surrounding towns back in as early as 2005 with regards to design standards. So Garbit has graciously agreed to research our our notes, our original master, master plan to see if she can come up with that information. So again, we don't have to recreate the wheel.
Okay.
Yeah. So we were in the process, actively in the process right now of getting that information.
Great. That's great.
I will mention that select person, Lorraine Carbone did a lot of work on this back. We talked about it, was it four years, was it four years ago? When she was town commander here. I don't, I've been looking through my files. I don't, I don't see anything that I have, but I know she may have some really good input as well.
Right. Thank you so much.
Okay. So thanks for joining us, Rodney. I look forward to working with you guys to make this change. And as I, I talked to Rodney prior, I, I think one of the biggest challenges that we'll have is getting out in front of this and explaining exactly why we're doing it is to stop the developments like the self-storage that by right could go in there at, at under 50% lot coverage and not have any architectural standards be a requirement. And, and so when we do implement any change to that bylaw and lower those triggers, it's for the benefit of the town, just to change when the mechanism happens to give us that control over the rural character. So I hope Rodney, you know, you promote that at the master plan implementation meetings. And, you know, we, we try to get out so that nobody has a false sense of this is to take away from anybody. It's really just a benefit to town.
Correct. And this is, this is a direct result of the feedback that we receive continuously over, over the years from your citizens about the rural character. So if all things considered equal, I think a lot of people are already on board with this. So your statement earlier about tightening up the definition and then presenting that information to the town, just letting them know, okay, this is, you know, we listen, this is what you want. And then presenting that information to the town, just letting them know, okay, this is, you know, we listen, this is what you want. Uh, this is in line with the rural character. And, uh, I think we'll be successful.
And, and to clarify too, again, for the public, anybody that watches these meetings, this is not on residential properties. It's on business zone properties. You know, it's not, nobody's going to take control away from you and your home. It's strictly for business properties that new development in town.
Correct.
Excellent. So I look forward to us working on that and getting that amended and improved.
Thank you. And thank you for the invitation. My apology for the delayed joining.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm glad you made it. Thanks for chiming in. Very well. Anytime. Reach back out to me if you, uh, want to come back.
You bet. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh. Okay. Next on the agenda, Julia's Way release of covenant update. So I didn't see anything in my packet. Kathy, do you have some, uh?
I don't. I, uh, I emailed Amy again, but I haven't heard back from her. So I'll try again next week.
Okay. So that's all. We're just waiting for an update from legal and close it out. All right. Very good. Um. Master plan implementation update fee review project. Who's got this one?
That was the same thing also been sent to Amy just for, um, some clarification, I guess, on some of the prices. So those are both sent to her together.
Okay. So waiting an update on that. Thank you. Uh. We have some minutes for August 12th, 2021. Did everybody get a chance to read through those?
Yes.
Anybody have any comments on them? Any changes or concerns? See no changes or concerns. So I'd make a motion to approve the planning board minutes. For the August 12th, 2021 remote meeting of the planning board.
Second.
As drafted and a motion and a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. Minutes are approved for August 12th. Uh. Next item. Oh, let me just. Under new business, Kathy circulated something today. Or 475 Kenneth Welch Drive. I read through it as quickly as I could. Looks like Boston Botanicals is not going to be in that building anymore and something called. Good buds.
Bud's goods.
Bud's goods. Same thing. Uh. So. They're utilizing a site plan that was presented before. Is that accurate, Kathy? Is what?
No. Um, I think it was like in February, you approved a site plan and there were certain things that you would want and included on it. So it was revised and that was the one that you signed. So the one that they presented is a little bit different and. I don't know off the top of my head. I think there were some. Comments that you had wanted on it because there's some conservation areas which I didn't see those. So I guess the question was, do you want them to put those changes that were already made? Or do you want them just to come in that night and have to go through the whole thing again? So.
Well, if, can you, or do, do they have a copy of the, the previously approved plan that we signed?
I could ask them if they, if that engineer did have that. He does not have that. Which is if you do something with site plan because it's not recorded. Nobody has a copy of that.
Right. Uh, except the town hall. Well, I, I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but I guess what I would want to do is if they could be provided. Uh, an electronic or paper copy of the plan that was approved with the, the note that. Uh, we had several changes or requirements on that plan. And that if they would add them to their existing plan and come in for us just to take a look at. I, I think we should still go through the process, not just sign a plan. That they added changes to. I want to look at their plan, but it, it would be very fair to, to give them the opportunity. To add those and maybe cut out a second or third meeting. So is that what we were looking for?
Yeah, just if you wanted those changes incorporated already and, you know, I don't know if there would be additional ones, but that those should be on that plan.
I, I would say it makes sense without looking at both plans side by side. Yes. But, you know, that for some reason, if there was added pavement on the approved plan. And they're not having as much pavement on this one and that changed. Some drainage that affected one of those requirements that we had, I would. Again, if they felt that it didn't. Meet the requirement we wanted, I would listen to them on that. But again, that's why I'd want to come back in if they didn't.
Yeah, I think you had an area where, um. The delivery was enclosed.
Yep.
So.
Yeah. Get them to plan. If they could make, add the changes and then we still want to come in and have a. A review with them. Uh, so I make the announcement that the planning board's next meeting is September 23rd at 7:00 PM 2021. Uh. I believe that concludes our, the business that I'm aware of tonight. Uh, does anybody else have anything that they'd want to mention before we adjourn? Michelle?
Uh, just something under old business. Um, just wanted to give you an update on the recordification project. Um, there are a number of items that, um, were suggested to be revised. Um, throughout the process and. Anything as small as a, a single word, like a, a spelling or a grammatical correction. Um, conservatively would need to, um. Be approved via town meeting and therefore planning board would have to hold a public hearing. So. I guess my question is, um, uh. In, in my opinion, I would think it would be best to address all those things at once. Um, especially if, if it's happening. To, to bring this all online and, and be consistent and conforming. Um. Is there any? Um. I believe it's coming up October is when we have to get the changes back to them. Um. It's not going to be approved until spring though, town meeting. Um, so we'll, we'll have to hold the public hearings. Uh, would there be any reason to maybe hold back and, and pass on it on the smaller? You know, recommendations like wording or grammatical, or do you think it's best to just get them all done?
I think get them all done. If it doesn't have to be done, uh, and on, until spring town meeting. The, the hearing has to be within six months of town meeting. So. We wouldn't want to have it until after January 1st anyway. So I would say get them all done.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Because if we held it too soon, we'd have to hold a second hearing. Right, Kathy? So yeah, I would say just keep working on them. And then when you get everything done, if it's December, January, when you finish, we'll just hold a hearing. Once we can post it for a spring town meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn?
Anybody else?
Second?
Second.
Oh, I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody. Agreed. Motion carries unanimously. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. And we will see you on, uh, September 23rd.